Gentlemen, thank you very much. I want to welcome everyone to the special meeting of the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Augen. It is Monday, November 24th, at 7:00 PM here in the council chamber. I welcome the council, I welcome the staff, and all those that are joining us here online or in the gallery. If you will join me, please, we will rise and sing the national anthem. Thank you. The Municipality of Central Augen acknowledges that it is located on the land of the Maquis Treaty that was signed by the Wahandat and by Anishobi nations, including ancestors of Chipawas of Tem's First Nation, and is also the traditional territory of the Hattasani, Adawan Durunk, and Mississauga Nation. These First Nations continue to provide ongoing stewardship of the land and waters and the Municipality of Central Augen. Council, disclosure of peculiar interest? Seeing none. Adoption of minutes of previous minutes. If I could get a mover in a second, or please. Counselor Connors and Deputy Mayor Noble, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that the minutes for this special meeting of council dated November 3rd, 2025, and regular meeting of council dated November 10th, 2025 be adopted.
Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Correspondents requiring action. The Port Stanley BIA Board of Management, letter from Ms. Leach. Can I get a mover in a second, or please? Deputy Mayor, Counselor Griffin, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Griffin, that the appointment of Susan Jacobs to the Port Stanley BIA Board of Management for the 2022 to 2026 term be approved.
Any questions or comments on this? Counselor Graham, please.
Through the chair, just wondering if there had been a call out to all the commercial property owners and business owners in Port Stanley to notify them of a vacancy and to see if they were interested in taking that spot, since it's an elected position.
Thank you, Counselor Graham. Will I put it through to the clerk or to the deputy mayor? Either of you can answer, please.
Through you, Mayor. I think that there is a vacancy for quite some time on that board, if I understand correctly, and we're also always looking for more people to be involved. So I think it was a well-known fact that we needed more people to get involved with the BIA. So if somebody was missed or felt left out, tell them to reach out to the BIA, because we're always looking for more support.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, follow-up from Counselor Graham, please.
So is that a no, that the BIA didn't put out a notice to all the commercial property owners and the business owners? There was a notice that went out?
Ms. Leach, please.
Mayor Sloan, through you to Counselor Graham. Earlier this year, the BIA did issue a call-out to the membership for available board positions, and since then, there has been some evolution and some vacancies. And I understand that most recently, some members of the board sort of solicited in person to seek additional members. There have been a few vacancies again over the past year, and this is an attempt to fill one of those positions at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Leach. Follow-up from Counselor Graham, thank you.
Were there any interested parties when there was the initial request that went out?
Mayor Sloan, through you to Counselor Graham. I believe there were no respondents at that time.
Any follow-up, Counselor Graham? Thank you. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor of appointing Ms. Jacobs to the BIA? All those in favor? Okay, opposed? Thank you. We welcome Ms. Jacobs. Moving on to reports. Director of Planning and Engineering Services, DPE 1525, an application for exemption of the Noise Bylaw, St. Thomas Gun Club. If I can get a mover in a second, or please. Deputy Mayor, Counselor Bachman, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Bachman, that an exemption to Bylaw Number 212, being a bylaw to control noise in the Municipality of Central Augen as amended, be granted to allow the St. Thomas Gun Club to hold their trap shooting events taking place on January 18th, 2026, and March 15th, 2026.
Any questions or comments on this file? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Thank you. Chief Administrative Officer, CAO 1725, the new municipal website and corporate rebranding. Mover in a second, or please. Deputy Mayor? Oh. Counselor, did you want to comment before we get into the discussion?
I had been going to move an alternative to the one recommended, but if Deputy Mayor Noble has moved it, and if he'd like a second, or I could always ask to bring an amendment.
Okay. If you're okay to go forward with that, we'll go forward with. Are you okay to second, and then we can go back? Thank you. So we have a mover, Deputy Mayor and Counselor Griffin for a second, or? And Ms. Leach.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Griffin, that in accordance with the Procurement of Goods and Services Bylaw 2448, Part 5, Section 13, the sole source procurement for the new municipal website migration to GHD Digital be approved in the amount of $21,311.20 one-time fee excluding HST, that the manager of communications be authorized to enter into a contract agreement with GHD Digital for the GovStack standard plan for a three-year term, with the annual subscription fee to be funded through the operating budget, and that the website migration and corporate rebranding project be funded through the 2025 forecasted budget surplus.
Ms. Panetta, did you want to come and speak to this? Or do you want to respond to questions? Whichever is easiest for you, because I know Counselor Griffin has one. Okay, we'll start with that. Counselor Griffin, please.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to move for us to amend, to remove that third clause, that the website migration and about, that we do the website migration and the rebranding. I'd like to move that we do the migration, but not the rebranding. It seems like money that we don't have to spend.
Thank you very much. Did you want to speak to the rebranding? Either you or... Oh, we need a second, or? Thank you, Ms. Hurd. We need a second for this. Counselor Graham, thank you very much. We have a mover, we have a second on changing the specifics on the rebranding. Ms. Panetta, do you want to speak to the rebranding piece, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sloan, and thank you, Counselor Griffin. So I just want to be clear that the rebranding is not just about aesthetics, it is about ensuring that our logo works effectively across different platforms and different applications. There is, we've run into some issues at smaller applications. Some of the elements of the logo, the fish and the corn, and some of the letters become difficult to read. So it'd be looking at refreshing that logo, but it'd also be looking at a brand and voice, a tagline, a slogan, key messages, a boilerplate. So it'd be encompassing more than just the logo. It'd also be about brand guidelines, so how the logo is applied in different applications, whether it's the municipality or some of our partners. So just being clear and effective in how we're communicating with residents, businesses, and visitors.
And Ms. Panetta, can I just ask you a question about rebranding? Because I know at the end of the day, in the private sector, we rebrand every certain amount of time because we want to attract clientele. When you were with the City of London, I know you had a distinguished career there, you were probably involved in some rebranding ideas. Is that fair to say?
Sure, yes. That's fair to say. So we did have a logo that we use very consistently, but over the course of my time there, we did bring in a graphic designer to help incorporate new colors to the palette, to refresh it. Right now, we have, I think it's four colors. Some of those pose a challenge when applied on a lighter background. There's a yellow and gold kind of circle around the logo, which when applied to different backgrounds, it becomes a little bit of a challenge. Same with the lettering. So there's an opportunity to look at that. But certainly, I couldn't find exactly when this logo was established, so I apologize, I don't have that information. But as we're looking at a new website, I think there'd be an opportunity to launch a refreshed brand at the same time.
Thank you. Questions from the group? Counselor Griffin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to be brief. I was with London Public Library when they did their rebranding, and I do know that it can kind of change the tone of things, and that can be worthwhile. We certainly had some patrons at the time who were excited to see something fresh and new. I just think that overwhelmingly, the tone that I get from the community about their government services is that they want to have the potholes filled, they want the garbage to get picked up, when we said it was going to get picked up. But we're not cool, and they're not asking us to be cool. They're asking us to be steady and consistent and get the thing done. And I just don't see the value, even in a couple thousand spent, to try and be fresh and trendy when we have something serviceable. And I mean, we lose little bits of money so many places. It's not a ton, but we don't have to lose it.
Thank you, Counselor Griffin. Any other counselors want to speak? Counselor Graham, did you have a... Sorry, I thought you had. Counselor Watson, thank you.
Through you, Mayor. So this is a one-time cost, then, this corporate rebranding of $15,000? And where does that money actually go to?
That would go to the work to refresh the brand. So we would look to bring on a graphic design specialist, or work with a graphic design specialist to help us with that. I would be assisting with the guidelines and the communications, the rollout, but I would be looking to have somebody help with the design. I would also note that the implementation of the rollout of the logo would be over, we wouldn't do it all at once, it'd be a rollout. So if we have a need for new signage in a park, we'd look to incorporate the brand at that time. I know we have a new park at Eagle Ridge coming and opening in the new year, or later this fall. So we'd look to incorporate the brand where we need to at the time. And things like business cards or letterhead, like we'd be reprinting it when we need to.
Thanks, Ms. Panetta. Do you have a follow-up, Counselor Watson, or we're going to go to Deputy Mayor? Deputy Mayor, and then Counselor Graham, thank you.
Through you, Mayor. So this would solve some of the problems where, when we're coming into Central Augen, a lot of the signage is in different font and doesn't match.
Yes, that's right. We don't have a consistent type font, so when you're driving into Central Augen, you notice a different font on the large sign on Sunset. That looks a little bit different than what you see in the arenas and different areas of the community. So yes.
Thank you, Ms. Panetta. Follow-up, and then Counselor Graham, thank you.
Through you, Mayor. So, but this wouldn't happen all at once, like we phase out these signs in a timely manner, so it's more cost-effective for the community?
Through you, Mayor Sloan. Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Counselor Graham, please.
Through the chair. So it sounds like then we would have a couple different brands moving forward, if we're going to be phasing it out over periods of time, that we would have some with the new, some with the old, which to me is going to be pretty confusing for people as well. I think that you could probably fix fonts and a logo, making it smaller or bigger on phones or things like that. I don't see the need for the $15,000 spend either, when we're trying, especially right now, when we're, our staff is in the budget for 2026, and we're trying to save money in these tough economical times. I don't see the need for that at all.
Thank you, Counselor Graham. Deputy Mayor, please.
Through you, Mayor. So we did look at this at Augen County, I remember, a while back, and it was, they looked at accessibility for making it easier to see for people that are visually challenged as well. Is that something that would get rounded into the same thing at the same time?
Through you, Mayor Sloan, yes. So while logos are not specifically required to be AODA compliant, it is a best practice. So one of the challenges that I've come across with our logo specifically is around the, at the Municipality of Central Augen, the way that it's curved in the circle, but then also there is a yellow gold kind of outline around, which sometimes makes it a little bit pixelated. So we'd be looking at things like that.
Thank you. And I'm looking here, and it's the website, the, goes through, the website migration, the corporate rebranding would be funded for the 2025 forecasted budget surplus. Is that correct, Ms. Panetta?
Through you, Mayor. So that's correct.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Connors, please.
Through you, Mayor. The lump sum $15,000, does that include costs of a graphic designer? And if not, like what other costs do you anticipate?
Through you, Mayor Sloan. Yes, that does include the cost for the work to take a look at our logo, design a new concept, likely more than one, and then any concept would be for council consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Panetta. I have Counselor Griffin, please.
Thank you through you. I did note that it's proposed that we do this out of surplus, but I think it's important for us to remember as well that last year, in order to make that zero happen, we actually depleted some reserves. And although it's great, and many people have said that they're pleased to have had that zero, if we had to spend out of reserves for it one year, then I don't see a reason to start looking to frivolously find ways to spend surplus when we have it. When we have surplus, it's a good thing for us to plan to put it away, so that when it does need dipping into for needs, we have it.
So I think we're going to do, if we may, do, take the vote on removing the corporate branding, if that's okay, because that was the piece. So I've got a mover and a second on that file. Correct, Ms. Leach? So, do you want to just read it back to what the amendment would be, please, Ms. Leach? Thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the First Amendment would be moved by Counselor Griffin, seconded by Counselor Graham, that Paragraph 3 be amended to remove the corporate rebranding project.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Main motion as amended? Mover in a second, or?
We got one.
Yeah? All those in favor? Oh, sorry, Counselor Graham, please go ahead.
Through the chair, I just have a couple of questions. So why didn't, why aren't we putting this out for RFP rather than doing sole source provider? That's my first one.
Ms. Panetta, please.
Through you, Mayor Sloan. We'd be looking to start this really soon, like tomorrow, given the timeline of when the end of life is happening. It needs to start immediately.
I'm just going to ask you a few questions, if that's okay, Ms. Panetta. I thought it was June 2026 that it was starting, so... Six months away?
Through you, Mayor Sloan. It does take quite a bit of time. We'd be looking at the entire site map, the menus, rewriting content, looking at our PDFs, making sure those are all accessible. So it is a considerable amount of work that will take, will take that time.
Go ahead, Counselor, please.
And did you look at GovStack's other designed websites? Like, did we review them so that we're trying to pick the best provider for that, especially if we're looking at a three-year term? I'd like to know why we're doing a three-year term without seeing what they're doing with our website. Like, I would prefer a one-year term, just, and then we could evaluate their work and go from there.
Through you, Mayor Sloan. I did look at GovStack's other websites, their different features. I've been meeting with them quite regularly to look at what their, what their new sites look like. So I have been looking at that. In speaking with GovStack, most municipalities choose either the three- to five-year term. I certainly can look at a one-year term, if that's council's desire.
Okay. Counselor Graham, please go.
Did you do like a comparative analysis with GovStack and other providers as well?
Apologies, Counselor Graham. I want to apologize for interrupting you.
Do you want me to repeat that?
Yes, please.
Just wondering if you had, like, looked at other websites, compared other websites with GovStocks, just to see which one is the easiest one to maneuver, since that's our number-one complaint?
Through you, Mayor Sloan. I did. I did look at other providers. GovStack is a leader in municipal websites. They have the expertise, they have, I feel confident in their technical support, their after-hours ticket support, their accessibility features, and I feel confident in the work that I've done to this point.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Monica, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate your efforts. CAO 1525, as the Municipality of Central Augen, council meeting schedule. Mover in a second, or please. Deputy Mayor, this side, Counselor Watson?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Watson, that the 2026 Municipality of Central Augen council schedule attaches Schedule A to Report, CAO 1525 be approved, and that the 2026 Municipality of Central Augen council schedule be communicated to partners and stakeholders and posted to the municipal website.
Any questions or comments? No? Thank you. And all those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Thank you. CAO 1625, as Municipal and School Board Election Voting Method. Could I get a mover in a second, or please? Counselor Griffin, thank you. Counselor Bachman, thank, or, yeah, Counselor Bachman, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Griffin, seconded by Counselor Bachman, that staff be directed to use telephone and internet voting technology for the 2026 Municipal and School Board election through the group purchasing opportunity within Televote Systems, Inc., and that a 2026 Municipal and School Board election method of vote bylaw be brought forward for consideration.
Any questions or comments? Counselor Graham?
Through the chair. Just wondering if there's any statistics on errors that are made through internet and phone, or how long it's been going, if they have those stats yet?
Mayor Sloan, through you to Counselor Graham. Are you able to provide some clarity on what errors would entail?
I'm, through the chair. I mean, I would imagine, so if, or saying that there's issues with the audit, if there's people voting that aren't the actual people, any mistakes, I would say, that would happen in an election using a phone or internet voting versus people showing up in person and verifying their identity that way.
Mayor Sloan, through you to Counselor Graham. Certainly in the early days of adoption of this technology, in the early 2000s, there were some network challenges that different vendors experienced with an incapacity in the servers to handle the volume of traffic that was coming through. In terms of individual results and those types of concerns, that's not something I had come across in reviewing this material. I think more of the challenges in previous years, as the technology was refined, were related to the technological component of it.
Thank you. Any questions? Is that a question? Okay, I wasn't sure. Well, I just didn't want to interrupt.
So just wondering what the backup plan would be. So like, today in Port Stanley, the internet was down for about five hours. So if that happened on election day, what would happen then?
Ms. Leach?
So when using paper ballots and the traditional voting method that Central Augen has used, the Municipality has always implemented its own internet at the voting locations, so that we provide our own sort of hotspot, and we're responsible for our own internet, not reliant on the networks. So that would certainly be continued with the voter assistance kiosk in the event of the telephone and internet option being selected.
Counselor Griffin, please.
Thank you through you. This is more feedback, I guess, than a question, but I think it's important for us to remember that everything is fallible. Last election, I think there was at least an hour of downtime at kiosks. Last year, I was invited to, AMO hosted a special conference called the Healthy Democracy Forum, and it was all about getting optimal engagement from your community. And this was a huge discussion that we had there. And overwhelmingly, the communities that had gone over to internet did find that there was some hesitation from people that are used to kiosk voting, but because they had those stations like you guys are talking about, and there was that ability to go and have someone help you sign in, and then leave you to vote, and let you do that, people still were able to get whatever level of assistance they needed. They were able to show up and be supported in voting. But it also really supported seniors, homebound people, young people. And one of the demographics that really said they appreciated it was people who like to travel in the winter, people that have seasonal cottages and things, and want to be able to, say, be in Florida. And considering that Port Stanley does have so many people that cottage, I think this is a great way for us to provide additional representation opportunity for them.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Opposed? Motion fails. Thank you. Ms. Hurd, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to, if I can just have a moment with the deputy clerk, because council does have, when it comes to elections, there is, excuse me, one decision that council needs to make, that is, and that is with the type of technology you want to vote. So with voting that down... So with voting that down, are you providing instruction on doing paper ballots, or would you be considering paper ballots with a tabulator like we did previously? Because again, voting that down kills everything. If that was your intention to get rid of the internet voting, an amendment would have been preferred, so then you would have another option for the deputy clerk then to take direction. So just trying to understand what this council was intending. By defeating that motion, essentially, that is providing direction to the deputy clerk that no technology would be available for the next election.
Thanks, Ms. Hurt. If I could speak on behalf of council, I think they'd like the election to be exactly the same as it was in 2022. Is that fair? Thank you.
So again, could I, could I just have just a moment just to speak procedurally with Ms. Leach to understand how we would go about managing this?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Leach?
Certainly. So the alternative to the internet and telephone voting is the use of vote tabulators, which is the technology that tabulates the votes as run through the machines, which is something that Central Logan has used for the past 25 years and should be quite familiar to everyone. So the new motion would be that staff be directed to use vote tabulators for the 2026 municipal and school board election through Dominion Voting, and that a 2026 municipal and school board election method of vote by law be brought, be brought forward for consideration.
Mover and a second or? Deputy Mayor, Counselor Connors, thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried, thank you. C, Director of Public Works and Community Services, PWCS 0925, contract award for supply and delivery of a street sweeper. Mover and a second or please? Deputy Mayor, Counselor Bachman, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Bachman, that the proposal submitted by Cubex Limited for the supply and delivery of a street sweeper in the amount of $431,336.41 plus HST be accepted, and that the mayor and deputy clerk be authorized to sign the agreement with Cubex Limited for the supply and delivery of a street sweeper.
Questions or comments on this item? Very good, seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried, thank you very much. Director of Corporate Services, Financial Update, DCS 1125, if I could move her in a second or please? Deputy Mayor, Counselor Connors, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Connors, that the staff report, DCS 1125, regarding the 2025 Q3 financial update be received for information.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jansen, did you want to speak to this, sir? Thank you.
Through you, Mayor Sloan. Just a correction, my apologies, but on second page of the council report where it addresses capital projects, please note there is a correction required there. Twenty-one projects have been completed, 33 are in progress, and only three are being carried to 2026. My apologies.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Any other questions from the council? Counselor Graham, please.
Through the chair. This is getting a bit into the weeds, Mr. Jansen, but it says that $62,000 was for geothermal repairs to the fire station. Would that not have been under warranty, or was it under warranty, depending on the year built?
Through you, Mayor Sloan. We did, we did try to put it through warranty. Small amounts were put through warranty, but the bulk of it lies on us to pay for the repairs.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you, sir. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried, thank you. E, Director of Fire Rescue Services, FS 0425, emergency management program, mover and a second or? Deputy Mayor, Counselor Griffin, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Griffin, that Bylaw 202555, being a bylaw to adopt an emergency management program and emergency response plan and meet other requirements under the Emergency Management and Civil Protection Act be adopted, and that Bylaw Number 2876 be repealed.
Any questions for the chief on this one? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Thank you. Could I get a mover and a second or for closed? Deputy Mayor, Counselor Connors, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Connors, that council proceed into closed session at 7:32 PM in order to address the matter pertaining to a proposed or pending land acquisition, advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, and a position plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on the half of the municipality.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried, we're in closed, thank you.